This is the April fifteenth special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And I will ask Ms. Martin, please call the vote.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am. The April first summary minutes in the pocket, any corrections? No corrections, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Runner, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions that pertain to tonight's hearing. I'd ask that the commission's entire file for each application be made a part of the record. And that qualifications for each staff witness be reflected in this, in that record. Finally, please administer the oath to each of the witnesses.
So ordered. Do you all swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. The packet had the March financial report. Any questions on that? No questions? How about the subdivision approvals and site development plans? Any questions on those? No questions, and we do not have any letters of credit and performance bonds. I do not believe we have any unfinished business or good business. So that'll get us right into the public hearing and only one item tonight that's document number twenty twenty-one zero nine DP. Richard Gibbs, Mary Noble Wilson, and Mary Fenton Wilson have found an application to amend the general development plan, which are the development plan conditions. On portions of tracts of land containing approximately twenty point seven five two eight acres located at zero Jerome Drive. And zero Wilson Road bounded by Stagecoach Avenue and Scottsville Road. And the property is some RS one A, single-family residential with a general development plan. So they'll have a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on March the third. And let me get to the map, get it pulled up here so you can see the properties in question. And this property should look familiar. It was rezoned in twenty nineteen to its current zoning of RS one A. Uh, the proposal this evening is to amend the development plan. Uh, there are only a few minor changes. So I'll go over those um, here just in a summary. And so uh, the first would be to reduce the maximum number of lots permitted for the overall development. Since the zone change in twenty nineteen, there's now uh, been a proposal to uh, basically leave the southern half of the development, southern half of what is below Wilson Road here. Um, to reduce the number of lots to one or only a few. And so the proposed amendments mainly relate to this southern piece here. Um, the first of which would be to remove the material requirements for accessory buildings. This would only be applicable to the south side of Wilson Road. All of the same restrictions would still remain in play for the north side. Along with that uh, proposed removal of the building restrictions on accessory structures. Um, there is a change to remove the concrete driveway requirement on the south side uh, of Wilson Road to allow. Um, for some flexibility there, you'll see the driveway that's shown on the concept plan. Um, and so. There would still be a requirement that the driveway be paved, it's just that it would not have to be concrete. And again, this would only apply to the south side. Um, the proposal does remain consistent with the future land use map, which is low density residential. Um, let's see, the density currently approved density is two point three six dwelling units per acre. The reduction in the number of lots would drop the density to one point two dwelling units per acre. There are, I will note that there are no changes to primary materials in any instance. Those would still remain as they were, uh, as approved in twenty nineteen. There were two policies we reviewed in the Scottsville Road corridor study. The second is a building material requirement for both residential and non-residential development for facades facing Scottsville Road and possibly all roadways. So the planning commission should determine if the proposed amendment is in compliance with this particular recommendation. You'll see uh, the changes outlined in bold for the development plan conditions. The first, reducing the number of lots to twenty-five. Um, number five, those are the restrictions um, for the accessory buildings and concrete driveway requirements. Again, those would not be applicable for the south side of Wilson Road. Uh, number seven relates to access. The original proposal, if you remember, included several lots on the south side of Wilson Road. And, and so it was requested with the last application that lots only have direct access, or that they would not have direct access to Wilson Road or Jerome Drive. And that they would be served by internal streets only. The proposal this evening would change that um, to allow up to two connections. Or two driveways on the south side of Wilson Road. Three driveways on the north side of Wilson Road. And two on Jerome Drive, which is up here. And otherwise, any other access would have to be from internal streets. Uh, the applicants have consulted with the Warren County Public Works Department. And they have okayed the proposed changes. Number eleven is just a housekeeping item stating that these development plan conditions if approved would replace the previous set that is recorded. Section three twelve eight on page four outlines the requirements for amending a development plan or a development plan condition. The applicant's information uh, to address this requirement is on page five for your reference. Looking at the Focus twenty thirty category review, there were only four items that we felt that the planning commission need to consider uh, or evaluate for compliance. Those are LU two, two point one, and two point nine, which look at character of the area and the Alphington community. And then LU two point eight, which relates to that Scottsville Road corridor study item that I noted just a minute ago. But with that, I'll jump back to page one with our points to consider. Again, the proposal does remain consistent with the future land use map. The proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria addressed in the site characteristics review and complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design. And the planning commission should consider if the proposed development plan amendment to reduce the maximum number of lots, amend restrictions on access. And remove the concrete driveway and building material requirements for accessory structures. Again, only on the south side of Wilson Road is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all I have for the report. I'll be happy to go over any of the sections in greater detail if need be, or answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Well, basically, it's three lots that we're changing, is that correct?
Well, this is just a concept, so it, it's possible that there may only be one lot on the south side of the road. Um, but with the proposed conditions, um, it could be possible that there would be more than just one. But the restrictions would be changing for everything. But I guess the development plan still applies to everything in green. But the main changes regarding the accessory building materials and concrete driveway requirement being removed, that's only on the south side. Everything else on the north side would stay essentially as it was approved in twenty nineteen. Except for some changes allowing some limited access directly to Wilson Road and Jerome Drive.
Okay, because it looks like on the concept plan, there are three lots drawn on that south section.
Right, but there, I guess, so this is just a concept plan, so there's not a guarantee that there would be three lots. It could be one, or two, or three. But in any instance, the access, the direct access to Wilson Road would be limited to no more than two. On the south side, so if for some reason this did develop as three lots, then there would have to be some sort of shared driveway. If there were three lots, because there's only two access points that are allowed.
Okay, it looks like they're asking for a barn, basically. And that's why I didn't know if there was a, two other small lots, what that would be infected.
Well, they're, the applicant's on the line, he may speak more to this, but he's proposing to build a home. And he would like to build an accessory building. But currently, the development plan conditions require that the accessory building be constructed of the same materials as the primary residence. And he's hoping to amend the development plan to allow a little bit of flexibility for his proposed accessory building.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant?
Rachel, this is Rick Starks. I drove out there last week to look at this property. The construction going on, um, it looks like a subdivision that's being developed, I guess, just north of the northern section of this property. Is that, what's the name of that subdivision?
Uh, I believe that's Drake's Ridge.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, commissioners? And I believe we have Mr. Gibbs online. Do you have anything, sir, that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I think she, Ms. Hurt handled uh, explained it very well.
Oh, if, if I could just get you sworn in, if, if your name and address, please.
Uh, Richard Gibbs, nine six five, Throughwood Circle, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you do swear to tell the truth, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, so Ms. Hurt has explained it very well of what our, our plans are. Uh, as of right now, I'm not planning on developing two lots in the front, or selling two lots in the front. That's just in case we ever want to in future purposes. Uh, if you've taken a look at the land, uh, Mr. Starks, you'll notice that it's not really conducive to putting forty-nine houses in that small twelve acres with uh, the uh, valley that's in the middle. Which is why I'm looking at using it more uh, for personal use.
Right.
Commissioners? I didn't mean to interrupt you, apologize.
Uh, with that amount of land, I feel like I'm gonna need uh, a little bit more than just a uh, lot more to, to take care of it with. Therefore, I'm looking at putting in a barn opposed to having a brick barn. I'd like to have a metal or wooden barn there.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Do we have anyone online that has a question or opposition? Any questions from anyone online? No questions, do we have any opposition to the, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, ma'am. My name's Charlie Cole, and I was, I was trying to get off mute. I'm a resident of Wilson Road.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Charles Cole, five ten Wilson Road.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I do, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, our, you know, my concern is there, there's only a limited number of homes on Wilson Road. And with direct access to home sites, it's going to increase the traffic in that very short, already congested road. So that, just voicing my concern as a resident of the, the area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Do you, do we have anyone else online with a question? Do we have any opposition to this request? Anyone else in opposition? No other questions? Nothing else, I'll call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, document number twenty one, twenty twenty-one nine DP. Based upon a testimony and documents in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan. As demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question. And our request is to find into fact, recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, and the motion carried, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, discussion items, you have anything for us, sir?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things uh, here. Uh, so first thing I'll just mention is that staff, all the staff that wish to be vaccinated has been vaccinated. We have about an eighty percent vaccination rate, which is great. So uh, we will, all, all staff will be returning back to the office and on April twenty-sixth. So will we be fully staffed in the office for the first time in over here. Um, with that, uh, most of our board members, for all our board, uh, are as well. So we're looking at options on how we might be able to get back to uh, either a hybrid type meeting. Where maybe staff and uh, all of the board members be in one place and maybe all the public be uh, and applicants participate by Zoom. Or go in a full meeting. Um, don't see a way we can go full meeting until we hit the uh, the uh, magic number, I guess, provided by the governor the other day. Of having two point five million people vaccinated. Um, and once we, once we hit that number, if those restrictions are lifted and we get that thousand person uh, limit. Then we, we might be able to just go back to a, a full, full meeting. So um, that, we'll just keep an eye on that, uh, we'll keep working on that. The hybrid meeting is kind of difficult technically. Um, the, the, it, it is and it isn't to do it right, it's a little bit difficult. Uh, we're looking at probably having the uh, the uh, county fiscal court's new system. They're gonna test that out uh, their next fiscal court meeting to see how that works with a hybrid meeting. Uh, contacted the city and, and they're not, uh, they're not really interested in trying to do a hybrid meeting. They tried it a couple of times and, and didn't work with their system. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at those options uh, and try to uh, move forward with one of those to we can get back to some sort of in-person format. The last thing I have uh, is just a kind of an update on the joint agreement. Um, I'm gonna do a screen share um, and do a uh, quick PowerPoint. Because that's the only way I really know how to explain it is visually. So let me see here. Can you all see that?
Got it, yes, sir.
Okay. So this is, uh, so the changes are, are two, two main changes. We have a, the distance from the small cities, city limits went to three quarters a mile. And then the other big change is that now they're gonna allow overlapping jurisdictions. And we'll talk about what that means as we go along here. The, so just a quick summary, so all communities, the whole, the all planning commissioners were a main part of any long-range planning. Uh, that, that didn't change. Property-specific applications or recommendations. So we'll probably stick with zone, using zone changes as the example uh, as we go throughout here. But they'd be bo, based on the new uh, new voting format. So it's very, pretty much the same framework we discussed last time. Uh, but we do have uh, more voting scenarios now that will grow, grow along with uh, city boundaries as they, as they grow. So you've seen this slide before. Um, again, if it's a future land use map change, a comprehensive plan matter, any staffing matter, zoning text amendment. It'd still be all twelve members of the planning commission. And then the property-specific applications that we hear such as zone changes will be this modified makeup. Uh, so in Bowling Green and Warren County, that is not uh, encompassed or encumbered by any of the small city uh, extend, expanded jurisdictions. It would be the four fiscal court appointees, four Bowling Green appointees, which would give us an eight total, five would make a quorum. Uh, in a small city or within three quarters a mile of their boundary, uh, we'll have forty, the four county appointees. And then the one small city appointee. So that would be a five total for uh, planning commission recommendation, three would make a quorum. And then the new scenario would be an overlaps of cities or areas of influence. Uh, then we get to what I'm just gonna call a plus one situation. And I've got some examples here in a second. Uh, and then I added this statement here, just a, any, no matter who votes on the zone change, for example. Whatever legislative body jurisdiction that's in, that's the body that would hear that. So if it's within city Bowling Green city limits, it'll go to the Bowling Green City Commission. Uh, if it's in unincorporated Warren County, it would go to the fiscal court. If it's any of the small cities, it would go to their city commissions. So we'll start looking at some of that. So how this will work, so Warren County appointees will vote in every matter. Bowling Green appointees will vote in most matters, except when an application is within another city's corporate limits. Or within three quarters of a mile. And I've got visuals to, to help explain this. Small city appointees uh, will vote within their corporate limits, but also within the three quarter mile area of influence. So that kind of just a different way to state that second bullet there. But then if any boundary overlaps, again, it's a small city plus one. So I'll go over uh, five quick examples here, text, and then we'll look at them uh, with a map. So example one, um, if it's in the city limits of Bowling Green. Or unincorporated Warren County, that's not within three quarters of a mile of any of the small cities. Again, it would be the four counties and the four Bowling Green appointees. Example two is if it's within a small city city limits or within three quarters of a mile. It'll be the four county appointees plus the one uh, small city appointee. And then where we get, so that's the same as, as uh, last we discussed. But now, and we're talking about overlaps, and this is where the combinations get uh, a, a little more confusing, but I think we can keep a handle on it. So if you're in the city of Bowling Green, but also within three quarters of a mile of Plum Springs. Then it would be the four Warren County appointees, the four city of Bowling Green appointees, and then you do the plus one scenario. So you would add the Plum Springs appointee at that point. Another overlap scenario, and we only have these two currently. But if, so in between uh, Smiths Grove and Oakland, three quarter mile overlap, that would be the four county. And then you would add the plus one Smiths Grove and the plus one Oakland, because uh, that, that would be in that overlap boundary. And then, keep in mind, this expands as city limits expands. So I'm just gonna say a future overlap. Uh, let's say the Trans Park, which is typically city of Bowling Green, expands to within three quarters of a mile Oakland or vice versa. The city of Oakland city limits span within three quarters of a mile the, of the Trans Park. Then you would do the plus one. So it would be the four county, four city of Bowling Green, and, and one Oakland in that situation too. So, so it's pretty much the same map we saw last time. So if it's yellow or gray, so city of Bowling Green or unincorporated Warren County. Again, you have the four city of Bowling Green appointees and the four Warren County fiscal court appointees. And then we'll look closer at the cities here. I'll start with the easy one with Woodburn. Uh, if it's in the gray, of course, that's Warren County. That would be the four uh, city of Bowling Green, the four fiscal court appointees, uh, and they would hear those. If it's in the orange, which is in that expanded jurisdiction of Woodburn. Then it would be the four, four uh, Warren County appointees and the one Woodburn appointee. But then the, for the planning commission, but then that recommendation would still go to the fiscal court. But if it's in within the city limits of Woodburn, it would be the same thing. It would be the four fiscal court appointees and the wood, wood, one Woodburn, but the recommendation would go to the city of Woodburn. So looking at uh, Oakland and Smiths Grove, same thing. Uh, you, in this section here, it would be Oakland would be the four fiscal court plus the one Oakland appointee. Uh, with, in the orange, the recommendation would go to the fiscal court. Uh, if it's within the city limits of Oakland, four fiscal court plus one Oakland, but it would go to the city of Oakland. Likewise, with Smiths Grove, again, in the green and the city limits of Smiths Grove. It would be the four Warren County appointees plus the one Smiths Grove. But the recommendation would go to the city of Smiths Grove. If it's in the orange, then it would go uh, to the fiscal court, but still be the four Warren County plus one Smiths Grove. And then the overlap here, you see right now, it's kind of this sliver here. Uh, that's where it would be the four Warren County appointees plus one Oakland, plus one Smiths Grove. With the uh, the recommendation would go to the fiscal court. So then you would have a different quorum mix there. So it'd be four plus one is five, plus one is six. So there we'd have six planning commissioners vote on that, that applications in this overlap area. So this one, I'm gonna go ahead and point out, again, this is city of Bowling Green city limits here. Maybe kind of hard to see, uh, but it, but up against uh, Plum Springs. Then you have Plum Springs is in this purple color here, that's their city limits. And then you have the orange, which is the three quarter of a mile uh, boundary, expanded jurisdiction of uh, Plum Springs. So I'll just start, if it's in Plum Springs in the purple, it would be the four Warren County appointees. Plus the one uh, Plum Springs appointee, with the recommendation going to the city of Plum Springs. If it's in the orange expanded area, but not within the city of Bowling Green. Then it would be the four Warren County appointees plus the one Plum Springs appointee with the recommendation going to the fiscal court. If it's within the city limits of the city of Bowling Green, but also within the orange uh, boundary of the expanded jurisdiction of Plum Springs. Then it would be the four city of Bowling Green appointees plus the four Warren County appointees. Plus the one Plum Springs appointee with the recommendation going to the city of Bowling Green. So that's kind of our current scenarios. Again, this will change over time as annexations happen and those boundaries move. But that is uh, what will be voted on starting as early as next week. I think city of Bowling Green is uh, at next Tuesday's meeting, has this on their docket for the first reading. Um, and uh, the other cities will, will shortly follow. But before I, I go any further, has anybody got any questions about the boundaries and the, the makeup there? We'll talk about meetings here in a second. Okay. So go, going forward, so April through June, it looks like uh, it will be kind of a legislative uh, body approval time. Ultimately, again, all six legislative bodies will have to agree to this. I think we do have general agreement at this point uh, to, to go along with this scheme. Um, some of the things we'll have to do between now and then is kind of figure this out. How are we gonna do meetings, how are we gonna work everything? Um, one thing is, we'll definitely have to have a nominating committee uh, in place uh, before probably our first July meeting. Um, I don't think it's- I don't think it's a secret at this point, but, uh, this is the end of, uh, Chair Runner's last term. I think she, uh, her last meeting will be our second June meeting. And she will be, uh, leaving us after twenty-eight years, uh, serving the planning commission, uh, seeing the population double and many, many, many hours of testimony. But, uh, so we'll have to, uh, think about, uh, a new chair and, and vice chair and how that, how that, we need to have that happen, given this new mix. Um, again, keeping in mind that Warren County appointees, uh, will be at every meeting. Bowling Green will probably, appointees will be at most meetings. So we may have to consider that, at least our first go-around when nominating chairs and vice chairs. We'll also probably, uh, ask you to make some slight revisions to the bylaws. These are some we've already kind of looked, looked at and talked about. Mostly, it's just to allow for electronic meetings, um, in some cases, uh, as we kind of transition back out to, uh, normal meetings. We may still want to have opportunity to have some electronic virtual meetings. Obviously, the pre-application meeting staff, we're gonna have to start trying to figure out when the switch is gonna flip and when everybody's gonna vote. Uh, and with thirty-day deadlines prior to the public hearings, figure out how we're gonna explain this to the applicants, who's gonna be voting on what, uh, and, and, uh, trying to get that timeline, those timelines lined out. And then, of course, once the application's submitted, we, we verify everything, property owners, locations, all of that, before we would, we would set an agenda. So how will we restructure our agenda? I think to start with, this is kind of what we're proposing, that every other month, we would have our full board meetings with all twelve, uh, planning commissioners. Uh, if we have the items to support that. Well, that equates to six meetings a year. Obviously, we'll call others if we need to. Uh, plus, we do have our annual training. Uh, we have selected these dates specifically to coincide with budget approvals and, uh, staffing just and personnel decisions. So this would be the, um, kind of set meeting times where dates where all twelve planning commissioners would, uh, would be present. So this is where, if we had a future, uh, application with a future land use map amendment proposed, or we were gonna do a zoning text change, or one of the, or staffing, or budget, or something like that, it would have to happen at one of these six meetings, uh, in the year. Otherwise, we would have to have a called meeting. Uh, so again, pretty much any agenda item that we normally see would be allowed at one of those six meetings.
Would there still be two meetings a month, like there is now the first and Thursday, or?
Yes, it'd still be two, still, still keep our, basically our same meeting schedule. Um, it's just that the only thing that changes the types of applications we would be hearing, and then the commissioner makeup, making those decisions based on the application types. So some applicants could possibly have to wait longer for their application to be heard, but I don't believe it will be, uh, um, too, too much of a, a burden, uh, in that regard. And then the smaller routine board meetings is just like Commissioner Vitale just mentioned. So that's all of our other meetings. So we'd still have eighteen meetings a year that, potentially, that have those, uh, just those, uh, items. And again, that's pretty much those in the yellow or the gray on the map. The unincorporated Warren County or the city of Bowling Green not, uh, overlapped by any other area of expanded jurisdiction. So those would be all other meeting dates. So talked a little bit about the, the chair, and so, you know, this is just our, uh, normal bylaws, normal way any boards operate. So if the elected chair of the planning commission cannot participate in a hearing, then of course, the vice chair presides. We do that now. But if neither the chair nor vice chair can participate, then a temporary chair will be elected to preside over the meeting. So, um, let's just say the chair and the vice chair were both city of Bowling Green appointees, but the application was in Smith Grove. Then neither city of Bowling Green, uh, no city of Bowling Green member would be voting in that matter. So you would have to elect a temporary chair, uh, at least for that one item to hear that. So that's why I say we might need to, uh, think a bit about, uh, when the nominating committee's appointed, who the, who the chair or vice chair, uh, may be. And just at least to start off with, did we get used to this new format? Uh, we've already kind of went over that third bullet point. Uh, that's not changed at all. Um, you get, we get paid for the meeting attendance. And then the fourth bullet point as well, there's no changes. All our other boards will continue to operate as they currently do. Minute approvals, um, so summary minutes after each meeting. We'll go ahead and distribute those to all, uh, board members electronically, uh, or by hard copy, depending on, uh, your preference. Uh, and of course, we'll still post our video recordings online. Uh, commissioners, uh, will have, up until the following meeting, to review them and suggest any changes. And then whatever mix of planning commissioners are at the following meeting will, will just vote and to certify, uh, whether the minutes, they think the minutes were, um, done correctly or not, and that could reflect the minute, meeting minutes. And then if we get any, uh, corrections or suggestions for corrections, uh, from any commissioner, we certainly make those and note those and pass those on to the, to the quorum. So let's say, meeting A happened and all twelve commissioners were there. Uh, and, and whatever business was taken, then meeting B happens, and it's only, uh, six commissioners there due to the voting makeup of the applications. Then, uh, those six commissioners will be approved of minutes. But all twelve that were at the previous meeting will have had that opportunity to comment uh, on, on those minutes to make sure they are, um, they are accurate. Well, that's pretty much, uh, it. Just wanted to run through that. Most of that was the same as we saw last time. It's just the, the overlapping jurisdictions and the boundaries had, had grown to three-quarters of a mile. Uh, but it, uh, was, was, uh, a little bit more complicated to administer, but it's, I don't think it's anything we can't handle. Uh, we just gotta be ready for it. Anybody got any questions?
So approximately, how long before this takes place, Ben? When will we start to see this new makeup?
That's a great question. I wished I had an answer, and I wished I could tell you how, uh, six different legislative bodies were gonna vote on first and second readings and when that was gonna happen. I might start a oddsmaker service or something on that, but, uh, that's why I think, uh, the small cities, uh, have, um, generally agreed, uh, verbally to this. Uh, they have wanted to see, uh, the city of Bowling Green and Warren County pass this prior to them taking the matter up, uh, at least with first readings. So assuming the city of Bowling Green and the fiscal court get that approved in April, um, and, and/or the first part of May, then I would assume we would see the small cities be voting. Uh, they usually only meet once a month, be May and June, which would, technically, it goes into effect as soon as the last person votes on it for a second reading, and they all agree to it. Um, so we're, we're kind of shooting for that July first, that first July meeting, uh, to, to be under this new, new format, but that may have to, to shift one way or another. The other complication is, is just our application deadline. Um, if we've advertised something as being a certain way, uh, we may just, it may be thirty days after that. So, but in general, we're looking at, uh, trying to hit that July, coincide with the new fiscal year. Kind of makes, uh, makes it somewhat more sense.
And Chair Runner, this is your last chance. You could reconsider.
We've got her, we've got her till the end of June. We'll make her sign a whole bunch of stuff, uh, at least on that last day before she, before she goes. But, you know, we've got her for a couple more meetings. Hamp, uh, do you, do you have anything else to add to that, uh, presentation? And Hamp's gonna be, uh, I guess sacrificing himself, going to all the small, small cities to, uh, help explain all this as well.
Um, may I have your PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
So Ben, regarding the, the meeting, we try to schedule on the agenda. Or only some of us, we all could, you have items on the agenda. Some of them may be all of us vote, and some of the people vote.
So, uh, you were breaking up a little bit, but I think I understood the nature of your question. So what we've, instead of trying to, the reason we've programmed it this way or suggested to program it this way is to avoid having a meeting where we have all twelve there, and I have to say, well, sorry, you three can't vote on item one. And then item two, eight of you vote, and then item three is six of you, and item four is all twelve again. So we're, we're, so that's why we've, uh, one of the reasons why we've programmed the proposed meeting dates the way we have. So, and, and then what we'll do on those, uh, six meetings where everybody's there, if we do have that situation, then we're gonna categorize those meetings by, uh, expanded jurisdiction, if you will, to, to make it, I guess, as easy to explain as possible. But right now, I would say, Rachel, I don't know if you've looked any of this up or not, but I'd, I'd say probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of our applications are either in unincorporated Warren County or, um, the city of Bowling Green not encumbered by one of those, uh, expanded areas of jurisdiction. However, last meeting, we had two in Smith Grove, and, uh, I think coming up, we probably will have one, uh, within that Plum Springs boundary as well, so.
Yeah, I don't know the percentage, but it would be fair to say that the vast majority would be unincorporated Warren County or incorporated Bowling Green.
The ones that were, that kind of, uh, skew that number is ones where we have the application that include the future land use map amendment. And as we've discussed before, though, uh, when a future land use map amendment is proposed, that is essentially amending, it is amending the conference of plan. So that takes all twelve members to do that. And we do have probably anywhere between ten and fifteen of those a year. So that'll, uh, tho, those might take some, uh, those will have to hit one of those, uh, six meetings where, where all twelve members are, are present.
Would, would that be the only action twelve could vote on then?
Other than the financials, the staffing, you know, those, those types, yes.
I, I mean, after, usually the way it's been after the, the, uh, flume amendment, if a zone change comes up or whatever action happens after that.
Yeah, yes. So what we'll have to do there is split those back out the way we used to do them. All twelve will hear the flume, which is gonna be very, reason we started combining them, because it was confusing to the public, this, those will be more difficult. Um, so, so we'll have to hear the flume, have twelve vote on that, and then we'll have to hear the zone change with whatever makeup fits the, fits the new scheme.
Right.
And it might not even happen on the same night. Is that what you're suggesting, Ben?
Um, it, it might not, but it just depends on the applicant, a bit of the applicant's pre, uh, preference, and then how we decide to handle those internally as well. So part of this, if we weren't so busy with all this development, which is a great, great, uh, challenge to have, was, was to, as you know, look at the future land use map and make amendments to make, and to maybe lessen the need for some of those future land use map amendments. Won't eliminate all of them, but this would certainly, uh, probably move that up the priority list if we can get to it. So, um, so we'll have to see how to handle those dual applications and, and, and figure that out.
Ben, do you still plan to send all the commissioners the packets? Even if we're not voting on those meetings, can we still get packets?
Yes. Of course, they're, yeah, definitely, because they're public as soon as we send them to you anyway, and they're on, posted online the day we send them or the day after we send them to you anyway. So yes, that would be just fine.
Thank you.
There's no more questions. That's all I have, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Anything else from the commissioners? Go re-adjourn. Nothing else. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.